Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you mind if we could pray?
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the opportunity to come together this evening and deal with the lives and the direction of this state. We pray that you guide us in the decisions that we make, that they may be pleasing to you. We thank and praise you for the weather you give us, albeit sometimes it's detrimental to our getting around. We just pray that you watch over all of us as we travel. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, reading and approval of minutes from February twenty-one.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Second.
Motion by Weidrich, second by Hiller. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. These are approved. Approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Hack. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Do we have those guys on the line?
No.
Okay. All right, so, under the engineer's report, I guess there are a few items on here. Discussion of the water treatment. What do you have up there, Monty? I didn't bring my computer. Okay. So, discussion of the items that we talked about the last meeting. To wrap things up, Monty and I discussed getting, this past week, getting the building ready to be lifted for sale. And we need to clean up these items and decide what we're gonna do with these before we, before we list it or build the specs for, you know, putting it up for bid. So, as we talked about last time, with these, with the capping of the twelve-inch main, removing of the fence and abandoning those concrete vaults. We still see those same prices. Did they give us anything new, Monty, on that?
No, and from Jared's email, they are still working to clarify some of those questions regarding those, and then coming up with change orders to either adopt them or not adopt them.
Okay. Yeah, I wish Pat was here to maybe answer the question of what if any liability would we have if we didn't go forward with capping those things off and stuff like that, and then you sold them and then somebody in the process of transacting the sale or something, somebody falls into one of those things going over there and exploring or something like that. And, the second question I would have is, you spend this kind of money to bring it up to snuff, if you will, does, do you get any of that money back in your asking price for the property? Is it a detriment to trying to sell that if you got some crap out there in the yard or the fence is still up or, you know, that type of thing?
I don't remember Mark's comment at the last meeting, you know, that it's fit for sale or whatever, but I would assume, depending on how we list it, you can note that these things are there that will need to be addressed.
Okay.
And adjust our minimum price based on some of those conditions.
Sure.
You know, if you're expecting somebody else to worry about doing forty-five thousand dollars worth of work, do you still ask two-hundred thousand dollars for the building?
You know, and part of the thing I'm looking at at this here is, the cities, the impact on the city is gonna be less than what the sticker price is because of being part of this, this project funding.
Right.
And, we, we know, based upon the language here, what that's gonna look like when it's done. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna look pleasing to the, the community eye. You sell it to somebody else, we have no stipulation as to whether or not they need to clean that stuff up, get rid of the fence or any of those types of things. You know, did they leave it? You know, we've been living with it, obviously, for many years here, since, you know, since we took the original water tower out of there and stuff like that, and we, we called it good enough. But as we continue to try to enhance the look of our town, you know, are we, are we being more responsible for our community, spending the forty percent of this? I think that's what it was, right? Sixty-forty split?
Yes.
Or, or do we hope whoever buys that is willing to, and they're gonna spend maybe that little dollar amount, or maybe they do some of that work themselves, I don't know, and then, and then it's not gonna cost them forty-some thousand?
Monty, was there anything in our, not last meeting, but the last time we talked about it, minutes, discussion about price tags on this or not, or did anything stick out?
No, not prior to this was, when this was presented in the last meeting. And I just did the calculation based, based on this, our cost would be about eighteen thousand, eighteen-five. For all.
What about sixty-forty?
Yeah.
So, it really, it really comes down to, is, is it money well spent on behalf of the city to, to get that all cleaned up there? You know, the, the other thing about that water line, that, that concerns me, because we're, we're pretty generous as a city. If something happens catastrophic or something, you know, with a, with a resident or a business or something, we've, we've got a history of working with them, which is then still a cost to the city. A twelve-inch line, you, you lose that, and if that continues to be kind of the main line coming in to that building for the future owner, that's, that's a lot of water. If you look at it like that, it looks like a lot of money. Once you do the calculation, it's only eighteen thousand, pretty sure we're gonna get our money back out of that.
We, we hope, you know, and Monty and I are talking about where do we start with the minimum bid, or where do we wanna start with?
Yeah.
You know, and we can involve the information that Heather Sturme gave us from Century Twenty-One as well, but, you know, if we're looking at, you know, setting a minimum there at one-fifty, let's say, you know, I, I don't know where, it's hard to say.
So then out of, so now of this work, you know, the only thing I guess that's worth, the only thing that's gonna change, I guess, as you're gonna view the property, is these guys are gonna tear down the fence. All this other stuff, I guess you're not gonna be able to see.
Yeah.
Right now. And two, even if I were to buy that property, I would then, I would then, I guess, like, want that fence there, you know, because that berm is gonna be there, you know, and if then, if that's not fenced off, and if then, I mean, like, someone, you know.
Yeah.
You know, then, I mean, like, walks on that, you know, and, you know, I mean, I mean, I mean, I guess we're then to, I guess.
Are the, the concrete vaults, are they within the fenced area?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's a part of the steel, though. Concrete vault.
No, not, not the big vault. I'm talking about from the old water tower that's in the fenced area.
Yes.
You know, honestly, when I was looking at this thing here, and albeit the fence is the least amount of expense here, I didn't see the necessity of paying the outside vendor to do it. But then the question is, if we were to do it ourselves with our city employees, can we do it for even that amount of dollars on, you know, what our regular hours, or where the rates are and stuff?
I think we could.
I would think so.
I would think so, too. So, I was more inclined looking at the, the exposure on the twelve-inch water feed, and then, and then the exposure on, and I don't know how well that's all encapsulated right now, you know, where the, where they were going to bust out in three feet of it and then fill it in with dirt and stuff like that. Maybe it's not a real big deal. And, and you're right with the fence, it may be that they, whoever the future owner is, wants the fence. It's not in that great a shape, but I do get what you're coming from, because it'd be a nice thing to have, so the kids aren't playing on it. Yeah.
There's no fence on the, on the west side of it.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's a straight up.
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm kinda wondering is, is, I get the fence idea, too, but how much, so we're gonna go down three feet to abandon those, how much of that lot is gonna, is it gonna be in like a taper? I guess I don't recall Jared ever saying that. It's not gonna be flat, but it's gonna be three feet down and then, are they, do they plan on tapering that?
They're just gonna bring it up to grade.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's the vault where those valves are is all that they're getting out of there. So, that would just be flat.
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
So, they're not.
They're not grading anything.
So, it'll be the same con-
Whatever.
You'll still have the reservoir and then it'll come down and then.
Yeah. You know, even if you left the fence, if you, if you did that work there and that is the heftiest part of this bill, does that make it look? You know, the snow and stuff, I don't remember how ugly it might look. And again, we've been living with it as a, as a city ever since we took the water tower down.
I guess in my opinion, I feel like we need to do the cap of the twelve-inch line, take it back, get the curb stuff in there close to the sidewalk as we can.
I agree with that.
And then, and then, no, and then do the, do the vaults as well. You know, and in the bid process, if we do it there, we can save the fence negotiable. We can, we, if they want it down, our guys can take it down. I don't think we should pay anybody else to do that.
I'd be for that.
I'd be on board with that.
We'll make a motion to cap the twelve-inch water main and to abandon the concrete belt and not do the fence.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Obedauer.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay.
Any outside engineers report, Monty?
I mean, did they give indication when they would, I mean, clearly now is, is a poor time with the weather and stuff like that, but when they would do this?
Yeah, it would, it would be after the thaw and everything.
But we could still put it on the, on the market and all that kind of stuff with identifiers in there that says that this stuff's being done.
Yeah, I can work on how we wanna advertise that for the next meeting, so that it's ready to go out.
And what if we set it out, the work hasn't been done yet, so I'm gonna say, knock ten grand off it, don't do one of those projects, is that, is that?
That might be interesting, that, that they do the change order and everything to do.
That's true, that's true, yeah, okay.
Now, ask, ask more. That's, that's a question. See what they say. They might say, eh, no problem. You know?
Hope that happens. Okay. Moving on to reports. Fire steward.
Okay, two weeks ago, we talked about lift station number four, that, that we had some issues with the wiring out there. And so, we did receive a quote up on the screen there from Dakota Pump and Control. Their quote is for simply the cables, the parts that go along with it, does not include the labor that Monty looked into, what the last lift station that we did similar work to, and it was just a couple of hours of labor and stuff. So, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and take this bid, throw another four-hundred or so dollars into it, and we'll, I'll make a motion that we would move forward with this work to the tune of four thousand dollars. And this is, this is necessary, the cable fails, then, then we don't have power to those, those pumps, and they're specialty cables, so they kinda got you.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's not something you just hire Mark or, or somebody local to come in and they, they just bring a spool of wire in and change it out, there's specialty ends and all that kind of stuff on there, so.
Motion by Hiller. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Obedauer.
Aye. Carry.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Streets.
Well, we're not done. Motion to order. So, the boys have been told, Dave called me last night, go around, got a good compliment from the school today, they can, around the school area, we were out. Of course, still, Dave said he wants to kind of hold off on some areas and not do it, on driveways, do it again the next couple days or tonight, so we're just gonna, we're gonna kind of feather and stuff as we go and check in. This afternoon, early afternoon, the plow did get dropped off over at Hazen Welding to start install on the snowgate. I asked Dave when, and he said, well, I don't have a when, but he's pretty, you know, when we asked for it, he's pretty on, on top. There was a mount or something that had to get fixed, but I was gonna call Dave, we're due midday tomorrow, just to kind of get an update, so.
Yeah, it looks like this whole week, there's potential for.
Yeah. Tonight.
One to two, two to three.
We're, we're in a three to six right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, you're crazy. Yeah, we were off in the last one, for sure. Hope we're off again, but, I know I talked with Monty and the girls, we're still hearing rough phone calls. I get it, understand.
Because of plugging of driveways?
Yeah. Anyways.
So, I guess, too, you know, I guess, y'all know that we've, I know, I guess, brought this up many times, these guys are supposed to plow, plow all the way over, all the way over on the curb. It seems like they're not going all the way over the curb. I just wonder, I guess, why that is.
I had that discussion again, and.
Is it too frozen? Is it ice, is it now, those, well, first berms they put up, are they ice now, or do they still plow that far over?
My opinion is no, and I, that's where, where I'll leave it at, is no, in my opinion. But I will follow up with Dave again. I'll probably call him today.
It, it seemed like early on, they, they kinda did that same thing, and then, and then some of the guys followed up with the smaller equipment, kinda going closer to the curb, and, and maybe it's just the timing isn't working where it's happening as quick, the follow-up stuff. I don't know if that's what their intentional approach is on it, but I noticed the same thing down Divide Street. And when we did it in the past, you know, and brought it to the center, they went right to the curb, so I don't think it's a fear of hitting the curb, but I don't know that either. It's, it's just a different approach, and, and maybe if we understood what their philosophy was, or how, you know, what their thoughts were, then that would give us the ability to answer some of those questions. Don't worry, we're, we're following up, but if, if it's, if it's not, and we have to, you know, go back and say, hey, it needs to be done again, and we need to come up with a way that we do it the first time, that's satisfying everybody.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Fire and busing library.
So then, on the busing van, I know I didn't bring this up, it was a couple months ago, you know, that, over in that van, I guess, was making a bunch of noise and stuff, oh, it only then I guess ran. Ran then I guess a week or two after that, then it was, you know, all this, I don't know, so.
Actually, that issue has been resolved. They are still using it in town.
Oh, they are? Okay.
It still makes noise, but.
Okay, well, then it's back alive.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Please just turn up the radio on.
Pretty much. It is back in operation.
Okay, well, good.
Do you still banning books over there, or?
It sounds like they are, I don't know if that's still. That's still, I guess, in the forefront, so, I mean, I don't know, doesn't sound like very good news, but, you know.
All right, police fire.
All right, I got a couple things. Last weekend, we had state fire school, we had a really good turnout for that, we had fourteen members go to fire school. Two of the three new guys were even able to attend, one would have had to take a whole bunch of vacations, so he wasn't able to attend, so that turned out to be a good thing. And we found out that fire department's gonna get audited this year for the ISO rating, so we've been digging into that. Fifty percent of that comes from the fire department. Ten percent comes from emergency communications, mainly dispatch, so it's kind of out of our control. And forty percent comes from the water supply. I talked to the water guys today a little bit, it sounds like we have no records of flow testing, hydrant flushing, anything like that, and that's all in on this ISO rating.
I think there's been flow testing, though.
I think there has, but it has to be consistent.
It's been, all the stuff I think was in that, I guess, report, I guess, back in like twenty, twenty-twenty, or no, twenty-twenty, twelve, I think.
Twenty-twelve?
Yeah, I think that was in there, flow testing.
From what, I haven't dug into this a whole lot, but from what Corey told me, is every single fire hydrant in the city has to be flow tested every single year, and there has to be a record of it going back twelve months. So, once a year, they have to each be flow tested. And after talking to Jared, they were already planning on setting up a procedure and everything, which I guess they can work with these guys when the audit does come, and get something that meets their standard, build that route. Obviously, it's not gonna help us for this audit that gave you the next audit, so we're currently sitting at five right now. One is the best, ten is the worst. We'll never get to a one. The only ones that probably will is like Bismarck, Fargo, Grand Forks, some big P ones, but if we could get upwards of, you know, four or three, that would help out every homeowner's insurance in town, or everybody's insurance in town, so we have that coming, so, just, you know, we're gonna go with that. Do we, in the conversations, I guess, these guys are newer, so they wouldn't know the history, but if we could find that twenty-twelve report, we would know at least the history up to that particular point. Correct. Yeah, and Jared did say he's gonna do some digging in the computer and the files, see if he can find anything. He said, I haven't stumbled across anything as of yet. Well, I would, I would think they would reach out to Dick or, or, you know, Brian or, you know, to see about some of that history, too. Yeah, so, and if nothing else, we can get the procedure in place, maybe next rating, we can get better. We know it's gonna be better due to the water tower stuff, or the loads are a lot better than they used to be, so we're pretty positive we'll be able to bump up at least one level, at least hopefully. When I did contact Kerry Turnus, he's got two Ford Excursions, two thousand and sixteen police vehicles for sale, used ones, obviously. There's been no report on when our engine's gonna show up, or when it's even gonna ship, no word on when we're even gonna be able to buy a new one, or order a new one. So, I went and looked at both of them. One that's got a hundred and eight, or just about a hundred and nine thousand miles on it, one's got a hundred and two thousand miles on it. They're both fully equipped, turnkey packages, the only thing we have to do is put our own decals on it, and that's it. So, these, these are county? Yeah, they're county, so they're both black. And, and they're getting rid of them because? Miles? They upgraded. Gotcha. They upgraded. Sounds like they got a rotation plan, just every so many years. And they, whatever miles is whatever miles. Yep. So, everything is in, including the laptop mounts and everything. The only thing they're gonna take off of it is the decals. We put our laptop in it, put our decals on it, and we got a vehicle ready to go.
Digital radio?
Radio, everything. Radar unit, granted, that is. What kind of sticker prices are we looking at there? Eight thousand. Eight thousand? I talked him down to eight thousand, so technically, that's even cheaper than the engine we were gonna put in. That's a good gap. Hiller for us. Plus, I would think if we do go ahead with this, we could have it in service by next week sometime. We'd have to get it down to Bismarck to get decals put on it, but I'd say, I'd say forego the engine replacement approach and, and go down this path. Yeah, that's my opinion, too, so I'd like to make a motion. I would like to go with the higher mileage one, after I looked at it, it's a little bit cleaner and has better tires on it. It's got a few more miles, but it looks like it's a nicer rig, so I'd like to make a motion to purchase a two thousand and sixteen Ford Expedition, a hundred and eight thousand miles on it, three thousand dollars from the county.
Yep, motion by Weidrich.
And second half.
Second by Hiller, discussion. You said Expedition first time, is it Excursion or Expedition?
Expedition.
Oh, yeah.
Who, who does the detailing and stuff, that's something up in this? Sign, sign pro.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, and we're in discussion.
I suppose I should add that in there, I don't know how much it's gonna cost.
That should, I'd pick a hundred dollars.
God, if they're black, we could just go with a white decal, it's gotta be pretty cheap.
Well, it would be the same decal that they've already got made for us, I mean, just have to make another one. I wanna say the last one was like twelve hundred dollars.
Do we add that in there, or do that?
Well, just, we can just include, or you can do a separate motion to approve the purchase of the decal and installation. Would probably be better.
Just motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Weidrich, second by Stern, and we're in discussion. Or, no, Hiller, I'm sorry. Sorry. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Obedauer.
Aye. Motion carried.
So, I'd also like to make a motion to purchase decals for this new vehicle. I guess I don't know how much it's gonna cost.
Up to fifteen hundred.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Obedauer.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thanks for getting into that, that's awesome.
Yep, thank you.
So, I also have been looking at other vehicles. Contacted Red Rock Ford out of Dickinson and Minna Chrysler, Chrysler dealership up in Minna. I was told by Stellantis that owns Dodge, that they're still open out of there right now, so I called up there and he basically didn't have a clue, but he was supposed to get back to me, he still hasn't got back to me. We missed the one for Ford, it is currently closed, but she finally did get back to me last week, and it will be opening up on June twelfth of this year, but she doesn't know the price or nothing until it does open up, so. You say open up the window of opportunity? Yes, for ordering. Once again, she didn't know if we did order on that date, could be six, eight months, a year after that, until we physically get it. I just wanted to let you guys know that. You know, we had talked at one time, maybe considering setting up some type of window so we can budget, you know, similar to, it sounds like to what the, the county is doing on that. I'm guessing we've got enough history on mileage and purchases and stuff like that, that we could kind of paint a picture to maybe establish that type of window?
We were looking at the five to six years, basically, based on the last ones. It just got out of whack when that one went down, and then we ended up buying them so close together.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, just wanted to let you guys know that, maybe in June, we can order a Ford, if we can't get one through Hoobers over here, I'd much rather.
That'd be my first choice, yeah, me, too.
But if we can't, I don't know how long we go without ordering one.
I agree.
Now that we do, did.
Now that we do, did decide to purchase this one, we do have some, some wiggle room now. And then, with the other one, um, that has a bad engine, I'm guessing we'll probably just sell that one the way it is, pull out, pull the equipment out of it and store it, and put it up for auction.
Yeah, we'll put it up and see if it's like we get a lot of results.
Okay. All I got.
Okay.
We may wanna, we may wanna look at the, the fire department, 'cause we're, we're, we're being a stipend out right now for personal use for our assistant fire chief, is that right?
Yeah.
I think we've done some of that in the past, but this one here needs a new engine, also, yeah, that would work, never mind.
Okay, uh, Buster's not here, and I have nothing, I have my, my report. Down to twelve A, equalization meeting.
All right, as I said in the notes, we have to have our April board equalization meeting within the first fifteen days of April. It used to be specifically that it had to be the second Tuesday of April for the city equalization. As I said, it's, just has to be within the first fifteen days. I'd still kind of like to stay with that second Tuesday, because doing it with the regular meeting can get a little interesting, depending on how many people show up, and anticipating about thirty notices of increase going out, so we could have as many as thirty people here to discuss their value.
And oftentimes, those letters go out, they'll contact you first initially, but usually, and.
Yeah.
Indicator would, yeah.
Yeah, if there's, if, if I got something wrong, we can usually resolve it before the equalization meeting even, but.
Okay. So you're looking at like the eleventh?
Yeah, April eleventh.
Do we know who do those, at five or five-thirty again?
We did five thirty.
Five thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion for that? No.
Just, just if that's gonna work, we'll set it for that, and I'll send out the notices.
I'm okay with that.
I've got a six, I've got a six o'clock Zoom meeting, um, but I can work with it.
I'm over to five? Can we move it to five?
The last several have been nobody here, so it's a fifteen-minute meeting.
Right, I'll risk it. Okay.
And I don't know my schedule yet for April. Sorry, but we'll go for it.
Okay.
Something to change on that?
No, then we'll change. Dan can run it from Arizona. Okay. Nobody here have a comment? Prove it, Bill. Do you see that? We're not, we're not, that's not yet.
Motion through.
Second.
Motion by Hack, second by Weidrich, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovindauer.
Aye, motion carried.
Any adjourned?
Like we're gonna have to cut down, Jim's, uh, McDonald's runs.